Please let's take our seats. Welcome to this evening's meeting, we're gonna have our invocation by Senior Pastor Devon Ward of Victorious Life Bible Church in Lovejoy, Georgia. It'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our Veteran of the Month who is Colonel Samuel Edward Seaton Jr. Please stand with me.
Every head bowed, every eye closed. Greatest thy faithfulness, oh God our Father. There is no shadow of turning from thee. Thou changes not thy compassions, they fail not. We thank you, oh God, for how you have allowed us to travel through the highways and the byways to assemble in this place. We thank you, God, that we can feel your presence even in this space and we thank you, God, that your love never fails us. God, Clayton County can truly declare that down through the years you have been good to us. You provided us with a community, you've provided us with unity, you've blessed us all over this county and we can't thank you enough. Thank you, God, for things as well as it is right now because it could be worse. There are so many who would love to be in Clayton County shoes, God, but we thank you for how you have brought us into this place and into this season. And as we continue and prepare to go forth in this meeting, God, we pray that you will give our Commissioners, those who represent us, who were elected to represent us, give them clarity of mind in their business dealings. Bless each leader and every department head as they go through the dangerous highways, byways, doing the work that has been set forth for them to do. And as we go into this meeting, God, we pray that we can all peaceably assemble, declare what it is that we need to declare, explain what it is that we need to explain, God. And we pray for those who are our veterans, those who are, who served not only this nation, not only the state, but right here in this local community, God. We thank you for those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice, God. We pray for those families, even families who are in bereavement right now. Let your love manifest itself like never before. We honor you and we decree it done in the matchless name of Jesus. Amen.
Come forth, sir.
Put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Welcome to the July 2nd, 2019 Clayton County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. The first order of business is adoption of the agenda. Does any members of the Board like to offer any amendments?
Yes, Madam Clerk, first one, we need to remove item 27. Resolution 2019-75, Resolution Authorizing Easement to Georgia Power. There's still some work that needs to be done. In reference to that, is there a second on that?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Issue unanimous. I would like to enter two items as emergency items. The first one is Resolution 2019-79. Resolution authorizing Clayton County to apply for and accept a community grant from Walmart, a community grant program. This is a request by Solicitor Generals for the purchase of school supplies. The emergency is that if they have to apply and receive the grant this week in order to utilize it for the purchase of supplies for our school kids. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Issue unanimous. Second item is Resolution Number 2019-80. Resolution providing for the establishment of the legal holidays to be observed by the government of Clayton County during the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Their emergency with this is tomorrow's the holiday, the 4th is a holiday and we need to formally adopt our holiday schedule. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Issue unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to take item number...
Yes, ma'am.
Were you finished?
Yeah, go ahead.
Item number 25 separately from the consent agenda.
Item 25.
The 2020 health benefits.
Yes, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, it's been properly moved in second by Commissioner Hambrick. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Issue unanimous.
Also, Mr. Chair, we need to remove item number three of the proclamation. That's for August.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Issue unanimous.
Here are no others, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair, with the said amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Any questions? Here are none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Issue unanimous.
Our next items are presentations and we'll have the first presentation will be the Veteran of the Month.
Alright, we're at that point again where we recognize our Veteran of the Month and this one is definitely special because it's right for 4th of July, those who fought bravely for our freedom and we thank each and every one of you. And there's veterans all throughout this house, so let's give our veterans a round of applause. Alright, so let me tell you about the Colonel. Colonel Samuel Edward Seaton Jr., retired as a highly decorated officer after 23 years in the US military. He served as a regular Army mortar gunner, radio operator, Morse code operator, crypto- cryptographic and telegraph, teletype operator, I'm sorry, in the 101st Airborne Division and 7th Special Forces Group. He was assigned to the 3rd Special Forces Group, then on to 5th Special Forces Group in Vietnam. He served as an executive officer, commander of an A-Team CN Combat. He was reassigned to HQ Company Special Warfare Center, Fort Bragg, as a commander. He was reassigned to Korea as a commander of Company B, 138 Infantry, 2D Infantry Division. He was assigned to the 1st Infantry Division as a regular Army Signal Officer. He was assigned to USA Troop Support Command, assigned to the US Communications Command, served on the Readiness Command, served as Commander and Staff Officer in the 813th Combat Construction Engineer Battalion in Alaska. He was assigned to the Pentagon as Special Operations Forces, Crisis Action Office and the Army Operations Center. He deployed to Saudi Arabia as the Deputy Assistant Chief of Staff for Material Management Center before retiring as a Colonel. List of his awards, Legion of Merit, Air Medal, five Commendation Medals, one for Valor, various campaign ribbons, Combat Infantry Badge, and Senior Parachutist. Colonel Seaton presently serves as a proud member of Armed Forces Senior Veterans. Let's give the Colonel a round of applause, please.
Mr. Parks and Rec Staff, please come up.
Clayton County observes July 2019 as Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of the communities throughout this country, including Clayton County, Georgia. And whereas parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, such as to improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2019 as Parks and Recreation Month in Clayton County, Georgia. We encourage all citizens during this month to recognize the importance of the role played by our parks and recreation in the well-being of our community and quality of life. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 2nd day of July in the year 2019.
Before we have our presentation, I just would like to make a quick announcement. Our Senior Services Department was officially awarded total accreditation for all of our senior centers. Somebody bring Ms. Tori Strauder in here. Tell her to come in here. Oh, there you go, I thought I seen you out there. Her and her staff has done a tremendous job and let me say this, not only did they receive it today, total accreditation on all three or four centers, three centers, but we are currently the only accredited senior centers in the state of Georgia.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that y'all did.
Mr. Chair, can I add one quick thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I was at an ATL meeting and we could not start because they were bragging on you and this Senior Services downtown Atlanta to all the developers and I tell you what, we gonna be looking forward to you all continuing to be a beacon of light for us. I just had to add that because I was shocked.
Well, thank you. You weren't shocked because you didn't expect nothing less.
You know what?
Because our seniors and senior department, they truly rock and I'm very proud of them.
That's true, but somebody else is telling our story.
There you go.
That's nice.
Alright, Madam Clerk.
Next we will have a presentation, Ethics Board by Attorney Jim Elliott.
Chairman Turner, members of the Board. My name is Jim Elliott, I'm an attorney in One Robbins down in central Georgia and I serve as legal counsel to the Clayton County Board of Ethics. In response, at their April 2019 meeting, the Board of Ethics adopted the following statement, which I'm just going to read, and I'm appearing here at their request. Mr. Rob Leatherwood filed complaint number three with the Clayton County Board of Ethics alleging as follows, and I quote from his complaint. At the Board of Commissioners meeting on December 18, 2018, Agenda Item Number 15 was in discussion. Chairman Turner mentioned that this item was added after the end of the business, after the end of business on December 12, 2018, therefore violating County Ordinance Section 2-35-01A, requiring that all Agenda Items be submitted accordingly. Hambrick, Gregory, and Edmondson voted it through anyway violating their own ordinance. And again, that language is specifically from the complaint. The Board made a factual finding as follows. After review of the videotape of said December 18, 2018 County Commission meeting, the Board finds that Mr. Leatherwood's allegation is true, that is to say that Agenda Item 15 was added after the deadline established by the cited section of the Code of, County Code of Ethics, County Code of Ordinances. Holding of the Board, above most important to establish an appropriate bar of ethical behavior for elected officials is for those officials to demonstrate full respect for the letter of the law. This is particularly true when the law is one established and to be enforced by the elected officials themselves. The Board of Ethics finds that the actions of the three Commissioners in December of 2018 disregarded procedural rules established by the Board of Commissioners for the governing of Commission meetings and avoiding, among other things, public perception that items can be added to an agenda at the last minute, preventing public input and adequate opportunity to study and address the issues by the remaining Commissioners. The Board finds that such actions violating the letter of a County Ordinance undermine the confidence of the Clayton County citizenry and their elected officials and raise serious questions of the ethical standards to which some officials hold themselves. These questions undermine the integrity of the Board of Commissioners. If the Board refuses to follow the rules that is established, why should citizens respect other county laws? In closing, the Board recommends that the Clayton Ethics Ordinance be amended to specifically provide that a knowing violation of any County Ordinance by an official as defined by Section 70-62 be made a specific violation of the ordinance actionable as provided in the ordinance.
Alright, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Elliott? Can I make a request to get a copy for all the Commissioners of what you just read?
Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your presentation.
Next, the Board will, the Board will hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Dr. Henry Anderson.
Henry Anderson, Unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. In continuing to talk about and discuss crime, criminal activity, unlawful actions, behaviors, and conduct in unincorporated Clayton County, which is under the jurisdiction and oversight and control of our Clayton County Police Department, I will now start when to present the crime statistical information empirical data numbers on the fifth major crime category, which is robbery. Robbery is defined as taking or trying to take money, goods, possession of property from someone that has value by utilizing intimidation, threat, or force. Robbery is a crime of theft and can be classified as larceny or stealing by force or by threat of force. Last year, 2018, in unincorporated Clayton County, which is under the jurisdiction, oversight, and control of our Clayton County Police Department, there were 465 reported cases of robberies compared to 506 reported cases in 2017 and 603 reported cases in 2016. The crime analysis to date, last year, 2018, the number of reported cases of robberies in unincorporated Clayton County decreased by 41 when compared to 2017, which is an 8.1% decrease. The commentary, even though our great Clayton County Police Department, which is under the authority, leadership, guidance, and command of our exemplary, excellent, hard-working, and top-performing Chief of Police Kevin Robinson, to be highly commended, praised, and celebrated on achieving an 8.1% reduction in our robbery crime rate in 2018, the facts continues to be on these matters that although overall crime rate in unincorporated Clayton County continues its downward trending at this present time, in Chief Robinson's second years as Chief of Police, our crime rate still remains very, very high when compared to other counties with the same or similar citizen population numbers. And it continues to speak to and reflects on the massive number of people and their teenage and young adult offspring who relocate and move to Clayton County due to our massive numbers of apartment homes, rental home and investment properties, low-end housing in townhomes, extended state hotels and motels, Section 8 housing, et cetera, and who bring with them their criminal intent, intentions, and tendencies and commit their crimes of violence, robberies, stealing, burglaries, motor vehicle thefts, et cetera, against a decent, hard-working, honest, honorable, law-abiding, principled, respectful, upstanding, well-behaving, well-disciplined, and well-mannered, taxpaying citizens of Clayton County who in addition to making the choice to live in Clayton County are great Clayton County citizens and assets because we are taxpayers and homeowners in Clayton County and we also bring value, worth, class, esteem, and professionalism to Clayton County and only want to live in a county where the crime rate is low and where crime and criminal activities, actions, events, occurrences, and incidences are at a minimal. I will continue to give the crime statistical information empirical data numbers on all of the eight major crime categories for unincorporated Clayton County at the next Clayton County Board of Commissioners Regular Business Meeting.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson. Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, unelected citizen of District 3. I've got some real good news, I tell you. My motto of movement in the spirit of excellence seems to be resonating within the structure of government with certain entities and certain departments. I'd just like to give a shout out to Jeff Matarco. I notified him on Wednesday after the last Board meeting that a tree was about to fall. Sent him the pictures and address, location, that Thursday the tree was coming down, so I'd like to give him a shout out. In my dual role as a consultant and as a citizen, I have a tendency to be involved in a lot of entities as I move about this beautiful county. And I just want to give Troy Hodges a shout out for his assistance and immediate response when I requested certain information and it looks like we are getting in that direction. And also, this is very rare, even though I don't live in your district, I greatly appreciate you properly answering my phone calls on certain things we do in your district, Commissioner Davis. And lastly, but not least, I'm very, very concerned about the Economic Development Office. I am, we're in the middle of trying to do something positive for the community and I requested a simple letter. And I would like to commend Erica Rocker Wills for her professional expertise in assisting me, even though she's not the Economic Development Director. Well, our mission was accomplished and hopefully we have some good news soon. My concern is, is that the IGA agreement that was fraudulently put together and malfeasance in office by Michael Emerson. I think that we are in the third quarter of this year and we have transparency, which is one of your mottos, and I'd just like to know where does the IGA agreement stands? The citizens of this community is spending over $300,000 on three and four employees over at the Development Authority that has no accountability, only to volunteers that sit on that board. So the termination of the IGA agreement would encompass bringing those employees back under the auspices of the Board of Commissioners where we can have a little bit more effective and spirited control as we move forward in the spirit of excellence and economic development. This is one of my concerns, currently the Economic Development Director has been working from home in Michigan, been gone for two weeks, and we paying him $125,000. No other county employee has that privilege. We have got to do something urgently to correct that matter. Thank you for your concern.
Thank you, sir.
Mickey Garber. Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. I'll try to be brief this evening. Of course, three minutes is brief, isn't it? News you can use. I'm glad to see that a Resolution 2019-77 to rezone property from RS 110 back to agriculture. This gives you an opportunity to redraw lines to not only protect business, but protect the citizens which live inside those business areas. Also, Resolute RS 110 should be totally eliminated to go to a next higher rating of houses, to build a better quality of house in Clayton County. Today, I saw auctions at the courthouse steps on properties that were abandoned that will drive investment back into communities that have been abandoned and destroyed and give greater value to those areas. Are there any questions? Thank you very much for your time and have a good 4th of July.
Thank you. Rob Leatherwood.
Rob Leatherwood, Riverdale, Clayton County. I wanted to bring to your attention at the last meeting, there were some changes made to the zoning public hearings. I felt like it was a little rough being the first time adopting that new platform for citizens to use. It seemed that there needs to be a little bit of tweaking done to that. When people want to speak, we're just calling on people based on who raises their hand the fastest. The same reason that public comment at this time is based on first come, first served. totally eliminated to go to a next higher rating of houses, to build a better quality of house in Clayton County. Today, I saw auctions at the courthouse steps on properties that were abandoned, that will drive investment back into communities that have been abandoned and, and destroyed, and give greater value to those areas. Are there any questions? Thank you very much for your time, and have a good Fourth of July.
Thank you. Rob Leatherwood.
Evening Chairman, Commissioners. Rob Leatherwood, Riverdale, Clayton County. I wanted to bring to your attention, at the last meeting, there were some changes made to the zoning public hearings. I felt like it was a little rough, being the first time adopting that new platform for citizens to use. It seemed that there needs to be a little bit of tweaking done to that. When people want to speak, we're just calling on people based on who raises their hand the fastest. The same reason that public comment at this time is based on first-come, first-served to whoever signs up on the sign-in sheet. If possible, we need to adopt the same platform for the public hearings for zoning issues. So if people get here first, they should by right have the opportunity to speak first and not get overruled by who puts their hand up the fastest. The other thing is that when the ten minutes goes for the speaking time for that, we're not pausing it to allow residents to get to the podium. So I feel like we're losing valuable time for our residents to give them that opportunity to speak and to address this board. So I definitely feel that we can make those tweaks to better fit the needs of those that come to speak on zoning matters. The other thing I wanted to mention is, there's quite a few things on the consent agenda tonight regarding the Clayton County Water Authority going in for some easements. Our Water Authority is fantastic. I don't have any complaints against them or what they have to do. We need to make sure as a county, we're doing our due diligence to respect the properties that we're encroaching on for the replacement of the sewer line. And I speak from experience, because my parents had a sewage line put in on their property over forty years ago. And to this day, they complain about it being a thorn in their side based on how the construction was done and how they were not happy with what was left afterwards. I know the Water Authority is under new leadership since then. I know that they have stipulations in place for each contract with the owners of the properties they go into. But again, we just need to make sure we're doing our due diligence, making sure that communication is being properly sent out to these residents, and that we are taking the time to actually listen to their needs and their concerns, especially if some of the wording in it is requiring them to move their items, or it's saying that the Water Authority will not replace any existing trees or shrubs, or things that I'm sure some homeowners have done to beautify their county and beautify their home. So I know, Commissioner Davis, I believe that's in your district there on Roxbury. So again, just want to make sure that we are making, you know, focused and making sure that we do hear those concerns, and that we are properly communicating that to those residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Real quick, on the easement, I do want to mention something. I'm trying my best to do some research, because the state in which I was raised, they don't have to go in and purchase easement, because easement is defined. And in the state of Georgia, for some reason, that didn't happen. So I hear you clearly, but I want you to kind of keep that in mind, because infrastructure is the key to everything. And if there's an issue with your parents, then all you have to do is email it, and Water Authority has gone back out to several properties and taken a look at it. But I think the community needs to understand, this is almost like an anomaly. In other areas, this is not the case. You know that the front part of your yard, back part of your yard, and side of your yard in other states do not belong to you, and they don't have to go in to go through this. So just kind of keep that in mind.
Right, thank you. Gaze Shakir.
I apologize now if I got it wrong.
Gaze is my husband. I'm Priscilla Sutton Shakir. This is my first time in the meeting, Chairman, and all on the board. You're wonderful, beautiful people, and all these concerns that are here with community individuals. So our issue, we live, I'm not sure in what district, but in Drake's Landing. There is a beautiful lake that we purchased a property on. And since the Clayton County storm drains were put in, we're experiencing more flooding. Some areas are impassable, even for emergency vehicles. And the storm drain water actually goes into the lake. So all of the waters coming in come into that lake, and we're, we happen to be on the low end. And so when that water comes in, it also floods into our backyard into and approaching or encroaching upon our septic drain field. So I want to, I'm so glad I'm here today. And when I hear, heard the gentleman talking about his issue with the Water Authorities, we had someone come out because of the emergency and the overflowing. Our dock was actually underwater, and parts of the property was at least two feet or up to me. And so my, my concern is, yes, you're, Clayton, not you, but Clayton County is putting in the infrastructures, but they're flooding and causing more harm than good.
Any questions?
That is in District Four. Excuse me. From what I'm understanding, anyone that had a body of water during this storm, the last two storms, water, it just flooded their backyards. We had some mini docks underwater. And I actually went out into Riverdale during the storm to view a few of them with the Water Authority. And the Water Authority has committed to coming out and really beginning to review the storm drainage and make sure they're clean and clear for the water to flow.
Is it possible for them to reroute?
That I don't know.
I will let them have, I'm going to say this again, only because I come from an area where I've dealt with severe weather. You all have to understand that the weather is moving closer and closer to Georgia. Up until this most recent year, we've never had a threat of a hurricane in a hurricane hit. So I want us to all keep that in mind, but keep reporting it, as the Commissioner just stated. And the only reason I'm speaking on it is because I think we've had, just have to deal with tornadoes of lately, I mean, in the past. But we got to understand that we're dealing with different topography now. So we just got to keep reporting it and be patient with it, because even up north, they're flooding every time. It's not just Clayton County. That's all I wanted to say. It's not unique to us.
Please take my card, give me a call, and we, we will definitely discuss it and bring somebody with the Water Authority to discuss it as well.
Thank you so very much. Thank you, my lady.
Now, you said the name I called was your husband. You also signed up.
Oh, I put both our names. I thought that was just a sign-up sheet, but thank you very much for being able to come to the podium.
My Lord, man.
I'm Priscilla.
So he's not going to speak then?
He's not going to speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Tina Shiffler.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I would like to have this distributed and put on the public record. I have a copy of each, for each of the Commissioners, as well as, I think it's Ms. Linda on the end. I've been very vocal about the Clayton County District Three rezoning that occurred from the December eighteenth Future Land Use Amendment text plan. Basically, the parcel plat. And I have here, spot zoning of individual parcels of property in a manner different from that of surrounding properties, primarily for the private interest of the owner of the property so zoned is subject to challenge unless there is a reasonable basis for distinguishing the parcel from surrounding parcels. Restrictions based solely on race or occupancy of property are not permitted. And a classification of, that discriminates against a racial or religious group can only be upheld in the state demonstrates an overwhelming interest that can be served no other way. And based on that, I'd like you to turn to page five. All right? This is the proposed rezoning that is going on. And if you'll look, everything except, everything on Woolsey Road and some Fortson Road is slated to be returned to agricultural, which is wonderful. However, the three parcels that are of our concern are the LGS communities. There are the three at the top. All right? If you skip to the second page, I mean, the last page, as you can see from this map here, this, if this is not a spot rezoning, then there never has been a spot rezoning, because you had twenty-two properties in this period and within a three-mile radius that were specifically zoned RS one-ten. All right? Nobody was notified, the individuals, they're business properties here, individuals. I went in, personally started researching to find out, because this directly connects to my property. All right? My position is, right now, our LGS does not have the proper infrastructure to complete what they've set out to do. They want to put three hundred and seventy-three or seventy-four houses on relatively a hundred and eighty-seven acres. All right? At this point, Henry County has only allotted them sewage for seventy-eight houses. So that, right there in itself, they can't do what they want to do as it is. The only other option they have is septic tanks. Well, I'm a lifelong resident there. I own twenty acres, and...
Your time is up, ma'am. I'm sorry. Thank you. Sam Seaton. He was a Colonel, and I believe he's left. Linda Walker.
Oh, hey, Ms. Walker.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Mr. Turner and Ms. Felicia.
Good evening.
My name is Linda Walker. I live on Walt Stevens Road, and I've been a resident here in Clayton County for almost fifty years. And I taught school here, retired from here. And what I'm here about tonight is about the enforcement of the codes of our county. Now, Mr. Jack Hancock wrote this law a few years ago, and most of y'all should not be aware of it. And it's called the Urban Village Zoning, which means there are no livestock. It's a law. Okay. My brother-in-law just recently passed away suddenly, and the property sold, Walker Nursery Farms, and some people bought it, making an organic garden. Well, in the process, I, as a good neighbor, he's asked various things about what would grow here for organic or whatever. And then it started turning, they were using my property, because my brother-in-law and husband, we all grew up together, so we shared the businesses together, except I had a burn, put separate soap for my privacy, because I'm the only person in the county that can be on commercial property, because I was grandfathered in back decades ago. Well, these people are squatters, so they're breaking three main things that bother me: zoning code, bird ordinance, and residence. They're living in a business that has no bathroom. They are from another country, but they have lived in the States for some time. They're Orthodox Jews. I have no problem with them. I like people for whatever they are and how they treat me. We're here approaching the Fourth of July, and I feel like my liberty and my things to protect my property is fair. They have brought in over hundreds of chickens. They slaughter animals. I have called numerous people, sir, Mr. Davis, you're in my district, and I have called your office since May twenty-eighth, and your assistant have not received a call back yet. The only person I've really had any luck with is Mr. Green, the code enforcement supervisor. He went out there when they had hundreds of chickens. They were getting run over in my yard, and I live a quarter of a mile off the road. I told him about it, and then I called Mr. Green. He called me back, went out there and saw it. Then they continued to keep them even after they were told, you can't have roosters, you can't have all these chickens. You can have three chickens, no roosters. Okay? They continued to disobey that rule. They wouldn't get off my property. They won't pay me rent. Now they've got me blocked with dumpsters. They have chicken manure that blows over into my hot tub, and my company has to deal with that. And nobody has come out. Mr. Davis, Ms. Harold, let's see, Ms. Dejeke. I called him. He was on vacation in May, and I haven't heard from him since. I don't know if he's still on vacation or what, along with his assistant, Ms. Johnson, Pat.
I'm sorry, ma'am, but your, but your time is up.
That have not given me.
Your time is up.
I'm sorry. So that's what I want, y'all, is just the Commissioners to do their job, and let's take care of this problem that we got.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dolores Jackson.
I'm not a lot of public speaking, but it's been decades. Hello, my name is Dolores Jackson. I'm a lifelong resident, law-abiding and taxpaying citizen of Clayton County for more than a half century. I've been in my home in Forest Park since nineteen sixty. It's a good community, by the way. I don't take real well to people blasting Clayton County or Forest Park, old classmates and everything. On August twenty-fifth last year, while traveling north on I-75 from the Stockbridge exit, an on-duty Clayton County Police Officer, Department Officer, traveling at seventy-five miles per hour, rammed into the back of my truck, lifted me off the ground, catapulted me fifteen feet forward. Okay? My seatbelt saved my life. My airbag did not deploy. My truck was totaled. The officer signed a statement admitting liability the night of the accident. There was no question. I've brought copies of the police report for your information. I've retained two different law firms to represent me in this matter, both of which were stonewalled by your staff for the, for the last nine months. They just wouldn't deal with them. They both gave up. The first one I fired, the second one fired me, law firm, in writing, didn't even call me. I'm now representing myself in this matter, and have a fool for attorney, I might add, and relying on the court of public opinion to help me end this nightmare incident. I required months of medical rehab, which is documented. Yes, there was a great deal of pain and suffering involved in my personal injuries, more so given my advanced age of seventy-two. I stand before you this evening in hopes that you will do the right thing, instruct and authorize your staff to negotiate and provide a fair settlement for my personal injuries. I did get a settlement for my, my property damage, which was half of what it cost me to replace my truck, and I didn't buy a new one. Last year, I did talk with the county attorney, Mr. Chuck Reed, first person so far, who's been helpful in information and protocol required. I thank him for being both professional and informative. I think he'll be discussing this matter with you soon. I'm willing and able to meet with the council, respond to any questions you may have. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm a proud citizen, which will, over which you govern and represent.
Thank you, ma'am.
I thank you. And I hear, here are the forms. Thanks again for your time.
Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
The Board will now approve the consent agenda items.
All right, is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick. Are there any questions? Hearing none, those favor I.
Aye.
Oppose. Issue unanimous.
The next item is item number twenty-five, which is the twenty-twenty health benefits. Human Resources respectively request the Board's approval of the benefits mixed for the twenty-twenty planned year human resource director.
Good evening, Clayton County. Good, the happy fourth of July to you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. I brought the proposal for the twenty-twenty benefit mix to you all last board meeting, and I did tell the Board that I will be bringing it back for your consideration. Chairman, I'm assuming that I will have to go through all of it again to put it back on record. Is that correct?
Yeah, let's do that. Commissioner Gregory wasn't with us last week, so just to get her back, back up to speed.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna put my glasses on, so I'm not going to be that vain today. Put my glasses on so I can see. We are requesting to implement Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia as our medical carrier for our punt of service, self-funded. The implementation of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia as a carrier for the self-funded punt of service medical coverage will result in the discontinuation of Aetna, but it will result in an initial projected savings of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The savings primarily stem from increased rebates for pharmacy, including a substantial rebate for specialty drugs and a wider network of healthcare providers. We did take it to market. The request for proposal for the process is well documented, and I do have that with me if any other Commissioners would like to review it. But the request for proposals is well documented, and results were analyzed based on industry-specific criteria. Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia received the overall highest score. Now, the dis, the recommendation to discontinue Aetna is based on several things. Since I have, I've been HR Director for the last two and a half years, during my tenure, we have increasingly received increased fees in our administrative services. So over the last three years, that's going to equate to like a nine percent increase that we are paying for administrative services with Aetna, and I don't see any enhanced benefits for that. and I don't see any enhanced benefits for that. Another thing is, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield has offered us a three-year rate guarantee. So there's not gonna be any changes in the rates for three years, a three-year rate guarantee. Uh, one of the other things is that we do have more pharmacy rebates, including your specialty drugs, and anyone in the industry knows that pharmacy is a high dollar cost when it comes to administering a health plan. We do have a wider network and what that means is that there are, within the Blue Cross Blue Shield network, there are more providers that our employees use. Why is that important? Because anytime you go out of network, it is an extra cost for the county as well as for the employee. So we do have that ni, uh, wider network. Another thing is the flexibility in our wellness dollars. Although Aetna provided, uh, a substantial amount of wellness dollars for us, it did not roll over. It was under the use it or lose it, uh, model. So we will have more flexibility in our wellness dollars. And it is for those reasons that we are, that I, as the, uh, HR Director, am recommending to the implementation of Blue Cross Blue Shield and the discontinuation of Aetna. We appreciate the business that Aetna has done with the county, but the focus is trying to make sure that we're offering the best benefit that we possibly can to the employees. The next one is we are recommending, uh, to maintain Kaiser Permanente as our HMO provider. Uh, despite a six point nine five percent increase, as I explained to the board, our employees find value in Kaiser. And believe it or not, I have had several employees who called, who has called me and said, please don't get rid of Kaiser because we do find value in Kaiser. Kaiser has been our HMO vendor for the past thirty years. Uh, market, uh, results indicate that Kaiser was the only carrier that quoted us for HMO. Uh, we did do due dil, due diligence and we had a provider to quote us an HMO price and I can tell you right now, they were twenty percent higher than Kaiser. Our employees, they have spoken. They like options and that's, that is one of the reasons why I would like to continue with Kaiser as the HMO. Under the dental plan, we are requesting to maintain Delta Denture. However, there will be enhancements. Um, we did, we have a current, well, currently we have a fifteen hundred dollar option and a two thousand dollar option under our dental plan. We did a internal analysis and we found that, uh, there wasn't much justification for the amount of money, the difference in premiums for those two, uh, options. So what we've done is we have dis, we're requesting the board to discontinue the fifteen hundred dollar option, maintain the two hu, two thousand dollar option at the fifteen hundred dollar option, at the fifteen hundred dollar price. So the employees will automatically, who choose, who choose that, uh, coverage, will get an extra five hundred dollars of coverage for the same price that they are currently paying. We're also requesting, uh, to add a dental HMO, uh, to the dental benefit mix. That will result in a restrict, a more restrictive network. However, the employees will pay a less premium as well as have robust benefits. We also are requesting, uh, to continue our income continuation products, the short-term disability and long-term disability with the Hartford. Uh, the county does not contribute to this voluntary benefit. However, as I said at the last board meeting, we do have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we are getting the best, uh, product that we can for our, uh, employees. Uh, the Hartford had worked, has worked with Clayton County for eleven years. We have received positive feedback from our employees as well as the HR staff. And Ms. Bohannon is here again, uh, this evening. Uh, so we've received just positive feedback in regards to how quickly Hartford processes claims and the timeliness and the customer service. So for that reason, we are requesting to maintain, um, the Hartford. We're also, uh, requesting to maintain Hartford as the provider of our life, uh, insurance, basic life and accidental death and dismem, dismemberment. Now Clayton County does contribute to the basic life coverage. Uh, however, um, the other portion of it is the employees, the supplemental, the employees, uh, they purchase that. Uh, the Hartford is the carrier for these life products. The life products consist of basic life and supplemental, AD and D. Employees are given the option to increase their products by one thousand, by hu, ten thousand dollars each open enrollment and they can increase the sponsor coverage by five thousand dollars each open enrollment. No changes are requested for the, in the coverage amount and/or conditions. Vision, now this is one that we're very excited about. We had gotten several complaints from our employees regarding Davis Vision because of the restricted network. We are requesting to replace Davis Vision with IMed. IMed, uh, is a up-and-coming, uh, carrier for Vision. They are really becoming the, just the forerunners when it comes to Vision and I can see why. Because they're offering a lot of different benefits, evergreen, uh, benefits that we don't currently have. There is no increase, would be no increase in premiums for the employees in regards to us switching from Davis Vision to IMed. So we are very, um, excited about that possibility. Colonial voluntary benefits, once again, the county does not contribute to these, uh, benefits, but we do have our fiduciary responsibility. Colonial provides various voluntary coverage options to our employees at a group rate. We changed that, I believe it was the last planned year. We changed from an individual rate to a group rate, which is cheaper for our, um, employees. We do believe that the voluntary coverage provided by Colonial is a add of value to our employees and we are requesting to continue to utilize Colonial. We're in negotiation for an employee, thank you, Deirdre, for an employee assistance program. The cost is a projected annual forty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. This is the only, uh, component of the benefit mix that is not included in the budget. And EAP is a cost containment strategy for the medical plan. It is, it is a very valuable benefit to our employees. Additionally, uh, Resolution ninety-one dash one oh-three, that is our substance abuse policy. That policy offers alternative employment-related decisions for employees who have violated that policy. Uh, they have to, the employees, if the director decides to retain employment, the employee has to go through treatment, uh, for whatever issue is at hand and the EAP, um, is a vehicle that we use for that. And currently, we do not have an EAP in place. The one that we have with the Hartford, um, is for the employees who have long, the long-term disability. Another example of that is we had a death of one of our employees in Parks and Recreation last year and we had, we had to actually go out and get grief counselors to come in. Had we had the EAP program, then we would've just, you know, we could've utilized that. Uh, zero out-of-pocket. Clayton County Board of Commissioners approved a contract to implement zero out-of-pocket as a vendor for imaging services for our twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen plan year. Um, the contract provided a zero deductible for employees and reduced imaging costs for Clayton County. Uh, this win-win strategy has resulted in a savings of over thirty-one thousand dollars for the county during its first year. Human Resources is requesting to retain zero out-of-pocket, uh, as a service provider for Plan Year twenty-twenty. Uh, flexible spending accounts, independent care accounts. Once again, this is a benefit that the county does not contribute to. Uh, we do feel that this is a very valuable benefit to our employees and we are requesting to keep that as part of the benefit mix. And that's it.
All right, is there a motion, motion to approve?
Uh, can we have a question for one?
Yeah, a question that's relevant to...
Yes.
Go ahead.
Cause I was gonna ask, um, instead of voting on all of it together, if we pull out maybe the, uh, health coverage or whatever and then vote like that. But then I have something to say before the vote.
Hold on, let's get, let's get, her question is, can we pull out any parts of the healthcare plan?
No, no. No. Can we vote on, instead of, I think you have this as a package.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we pull the package? Instead of voting on everything at one time? Because there are some things I agree with and there are some I don't and I don't wanna vote yea or nay and which, you know, might be detrimental to, uh, something else.
So again, she wants to know if you can dissect the package and vote on it separately, on the items separately.
Can we do it in executive session since it's dealing with personnel, a personnel matter? Because I don't want us to get into too much of instances because even the, the notion or the talking about the employee that passed away, we wanna be very careful of, even though you didn't call any names, I just wanna be very careful that we're discussing these matters here and it should fall under personnel, I believe, because this is a personnel matter dealing with the benefits so that we don't get any other instances going on out here that shouldn't be discussed.
It really would be, if you're talking about a specific person.
It would be personal.
I can, we can speak of specific instances that these benefits affect. Cause I have specific concerns. It's not that the savings and all of that's there. There are specific concerns that I have.
Right, but...
In particular, and I think that Commissioner Hambrick had something that she wanted to speak to, too.
When you deal with issues in executive session, you're talking about a specific individual, not, um, not something that would affect a, you know, cause you can make any, you can make an argument that anything the county does affects a person or affects personnel. So it has to be for executive session purposes. County business must be conducted in public.
That should've been done in a work session. That's, okay, thank you.
So yeah, a work session would be a much better...
Thank you. Cause I can't divulge, I, but I, there are some things professionally that I would like to address as well. Free for those that wanna know. But there are certain things that I'm aware of that I wanna look into and I've been looking into and it's no discredit to what we've been doing here. This is a board discussion that I'm asking about.
Ms. Samuels.
Um, earlier today when we talked and you also said we're at a time thing, cause I had questions too about some items and we talked. But you said we're also, are we at a deadline for this or?
It, we, we are nearing a deadline. And let me explain something to the board that I didn't explain before. We are in our transition to Munis for Benefits Administration.
I don't agree.
With, without, um, knowing who the carriers will be, then that is going to delay that. We're trying to get Munis up and running for the October enrollment. There's a lot of, of, of things that go on in the background that is tied to payroll because deductions have to be in place so that they can start coming out of the employee's paycheck. And let me say this too, I have went on minute track and, uh, made a request to come before the board to discuss the state of our employee benefits. There have been concerns about us being competitive. I have actually pulled the data because I'm a data-driven person. I have pulled the data and I want the data to speak for itself. So on the first board meeting in August, I am requesting to come before the board to present not only to the board, but to our citizens, the state of our benefits because what we, the initial data that we have so far shows that Clayton County is very competitive. Now, are there some things that other counties may be doing a little better? Yes. Are there things that they may be doing that, that is, that are not up to standards with what we're doing? Yes, but I do want to put that out there because I think it is so important that you let the data speak for itself and the board has every right to be concerned. I'm concerned, but I do want the data to start speaking for itself. Moving forward with whomever the carriers are that we choose, we will be having quarterly utilization meetings so that we can be looking at this data more closely and making decisions based on the data and what the employees need. So, uh, Commissioner Gregory, yes, ma'am, there is, it's beginning to be a time crunch. I tried to make sure that I brought what I thought was a solid plan before the board. I tried to do that early. So we didn't get a vote last, uh, meeting, so I brought it back again this, this time. But yes, ma'am, it's beginning to be a time crunch because there's a lot of things that have to go on behind the scenes, tied into payroll, tied to our new technology platform that we have to have in place.
Okay, you were, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
You, you were mentioning about being concerned and, and I am too, especially with the health coverage because I don't know what's going on with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, but there was something in the news in the last couple of years regarding, uh, that organization at Piedmont Hospital and the different Piedmonts. So I, yeah, I don't know what's going on and I know that the state, because I carry the state retirement plan.
Yes, ma'am.
They switched over. They, you know, they stopped with that plan anyway, with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So it concerns me somewhat that, you know, they are offering, you know, probably better, um, plans, I guess, or, uh, good prices, rates or whatever. But I think we really need to check and all because it, for the state to do that is something, you know, and then it was all in the news regarding them and Piedmont. And, and your folk were in the hospital, couldn't get dismissed or couldn't get admitted and all that. So I just want us to really, um, think on that and...
Let me take advantage of my resources and we do have James Ford from Epic is who's here and perhaps he can speak to that.
That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Director. Chairman, Commissioners. There was an issue, um, there's a contractual dispute between Anthem and Piedmont. It's been since resolved. Typically, carriers go through that every three to five years.
Say Aetna or Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Uh, Anthem, Anthem is Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia now.
Oh, I thought you said Aetna.
Yes, uh, Anthem, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia. So they had a contractual dispute with Piedmont, which will occur approximately every three to five years, but it is now resolved.
So, Ms. Samuels, with all this, y'all, I apologize, I wasn't here last meeting. So are we looking at any kind of increases to employees for...
The only increase, Commissioner, is for the employees who have Kaiser. They may have an increase because Kaiser's renewal rate is six point nine percent. But I did say at the last meeting that Kaiser, they have come in below trend for the last two years, um, with their renewals for us. I've expressed, and, and, uh, Mr. Williams is here. I've expressed, I expressed, uh, during the last meeting, I express again that I am not happy with the six point nine, uh, point, six point nine five percent. But I did, as the HR Director, I did not request to yank Kaiser because I have gotten calls from our employees that say, don't do anything with Kaiser. Uh, they like options, they want options. So once everything is laid out to them and they are reviewing what's best for their families, I'm sure that they would make the choice, but the option is there.
I just wanna say on record, I do not recommend that we use this new system to enroll these benefits. The broker, Mr. James, and I see each other a lot, but I wanna say that it is you all's job to be able to provide an effective enrollment system to make sure that everything is accurate and that we don't have to have any issues that we've had in the past. Because it gives me true heartburn when I find out that we have employees that do not have health benefits for whatever reason or that we can't get the data correct so that we can ensure that our folks have benefits in place. So no disrespect at all to our folks, but we pay a broker to offer broker services. This story has been the same for me for thirteen years coming before this county. So, and this is to him, Ms. Samuels, give me a second. So when we are both in this industry, we expect to receive service that we would get anyplace else. And what I find is sometimes there are those that provide service who come to Clayton County, offer a different level of service than they offer anyplace else. And so my concern, Ms. Samuels, is not just because of who the carriers, because we are self-insured, which means all we're doing is buying it or going into a network and they're managing basically how we're paying out our, um, fees and costs and so forth. What I have been looking for out of the broker is a better mix and more creativity and to use the folks that you have on the back end, whether it's Epic or anyplace else, to make sure that the benefits are, first of all, delivered accurately, they're delivered effectively and that we have options. And we shouldn't be sitting here with our backs up against the wall when we've been paying a broker to provide those services. Now, I'm gonna put this on record. It gives me more heartburn to be able to come here and sit in this chair and in this seat and watch the level of service that my county, my county, of which I live, I pay my taxes and start at this benefit walk-in and see a different level of service provided to us. That day is over. So it's not about your staff. It's not about anybody else. It's about the fact that it's not just about the carrier. It's, you all haven't even been having the proper communication with the carriers. We're just starting to do that. We are behind the times and we're not gonna make it up in one night. That's it. That's it.
I, I want to put something on the record too, because I agree with Commissioner Warner in regards to the quality of service. Let me say this, I have been in place in this position, and I thank you all for the opportunity to serve, for two and a half years. We have, we have transformed Benefits Administration from a purely administrative function to a more strategic function. When I talked to Commissioner Gregory this, this evening, you know, she said, well, is, and I did explain that, yeah, it's different, what we're bringing forth is different, because I promised the Board of Commissioners that we're not doing business the same old way. We are the ones, it is my responsibility to make sure that I am getting the most out of the broker that I, that, that can be possibly gotten. So if there's an issue with the broker, then as the HR Director, I'm the one that will have to take responsibility for that, and we are stepping up our game when it comes to the things that we are requiring our broker to do. Hence, the strategic plan that you all have before you. Never before has, have we looked at Benefits Administration from the scope that we are looking at now. Traditionally, we have, it has been a purely administration function, administrative function where we are paying bills, balancing, it is so much more than that now. We can't get everything done in one day, we can't get everything done in one year, but I dare anyone to say that we're not on the right track.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would like to make a motion to.
Hold on, I ain't calling for it yet. Is there any other questions for this broker before he sits down? Hold on. All right, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to take the healthcare separately from the other package that you have.
When you say healthcare, you're specifically talking about Blue Shield, Blue Shield.
Right, and, right. The medical.
The rest, the other ones are voluntary benefits, ma'am.
Or, or the dental and vision, or whatever.
We don't contribute to them.
Taking everything except, correct me if I'm wrong with your motion, except for the, the, uh, the medical health.
Exactly.
All right, so is there a second on this motion? Commissioner Gregory seconded the motion. Are there any questions? You got a question, Commissioner?
I do. So you're saying without the optionals of the dental and the vision?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on the, uh, Blue Shield, Blue Cross separate.
Right.
Everything else, the volunteer benefits, this package. Any other questions?
The only thing I would say with that is, the only thing we contribute to is the major medical, so the rest of it is pretty much voluntary benefits that people choose and elect, because we don't contribute to much of anything else. What else do we contribute to, contribute to? Tom, sorry?
As the HR Director, we contribute to the aid, we contribute to the medical, we contribute to the dental, as well as, as well as the vision.
Okay, so what's the portion of contribution on the vision?
I believe it's seventy, is it seventy thirty caring? It is seventy thirty.
And what about the dental?
Uh, the dental, the same.
Seventy thirty. So the only reason I was mentioning that is because then those are basically elected as well, but majority, the major medical is the main thing we need to look at. Whatever y'all want to do, you could do.
Commissioner Gregory?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing, Ms. Samuels, and I appreciate it, because I mean, you broke it down plain and simple for me today when we talk. I appreciate everything you've gone, you know, to do. I did have one quick question. I know you said people called you and said, don't get rid of Kaiser. Did we get any feedback from the self-funded plan, you know, with us dropping Aetna, that we've done Aetna for ages? Did you get any complaints about Aetna?
No, ma'am, we did, I did not, I did not, but I did get specific calls about Kaiser, about ma'am retaining Kaiser.
And as, let's say going, let's say going forward, if, if Blue Cross is, is, if the vote goes and we go with favor with your recommendation, will you do any kind of feedback from employees with the self-funded to see how Blue Cross is doing as we go on next year?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
What's their satisfaction level?
Yes, ma'am, I give you, I give you my word, I am very data-driven, I want the data to speak for itself. We've done various surveys with our employees to find out what it is that are important to them, and what we identified as being important to the employees is cost, communication, and options. And everything we do on the Benefits Administration side is focused on those three areas. It was unacceptable to me that the only time our employees heard from us was doing open enrollment. Now we have our Wellness Wednesdays, and we're getting ready to ramp them up, where we're trying to consistently communicate with the employees. We have benefit partners that are assigned to the department, so if you work for the police department, you know who your benefit partner is, and you can pick up the phone, call that person, and get whatever information that you need. So when I say we're not planning, we are moving forward, and we are trying to continue to make strides, and I promised the board that that's what we will continue to do. We are, whomever you all select, whatever recommendation, we will be meeting with those carriers every quarter to get information that we need, the data, so that we can make decisions as we go. And if it doesn't work, I have no problem coming to the board and saying, you know what, the recommendation I made, it wasn't the best recommendation for our employees, here's something else that I want you to look at. So this is not the end. This is not the end. We will continue to work with the carriers, to work with our employees, to make sure that we're doing what we can to deliver the best benefit at the lowest cost, because sustainability and all of that is important. So, yes, ma'am.
And again, I appreciate your work, and Commissioner Hamburg, and to my colleagues, I'm fine with voting on it as a packet.
I am too, at this point.
At this point, right, you, you agree, and because, as you said, I don't want to hold up any, you know, time crunch that we've got to get into, I don't want to do that. And while I'm not happy with the increase, you know, we are where we are. And at the same time, with the Blue Cross, I'm not a big Blue Cross, I was still just kind of sold on the Aetna, but I feel like as, as this board, we hired you, we tasked you, and we gotta have a little, I'm gonna have confidence in your recommendation, and that going forward, we will be doing satisfaction surveys, unsatisfaction.
We will.
I have confidence in your.
I rescind my motion too.
I would like to rescind that motion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
All right, so Commissioner Hamburg rescind, rescinded her motion, I'm gonna second the motion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Is there a motion to approve the packet, intact? I'll make the motion as they're second.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions to debate? Those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed.
Abstain.
Four approvals and one abstention.
We're gonna hold their feet to the fire, you just wait and see. Thank you.
I'm just gonna say this, we pay people to do a job, they need to do the job.
Mr. Chair, do we approve the minutes from last meeting? Because I don't remember abstaining.
Say what now?
Did we approve the meeting? Right, that's what I'm saying, I don't remember abstaining from, I just wanted to make sure.
I can abstain.
Abstaining from.
From the, when we voted on the approval of the last board member meeting minutes, I did not abstain.
You didn't.
Because I wasn't here, right, that's what I'm saying.
That's correct, that's a good catch.
Well, I said, I didn't abstain, so.
I thought you were speaking to mine.
Okay. When we approved the, the consent.
Please make sure you put me abstaining.
Notate that she abstained, she was absent. Okay, next one. Where are we at?
Mr. Chairman, that's everything except the board appointees?
All right, at this point, we'll do board appointments. The first appointment is the Animal Control Board to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Don McMillan Senior, who resigned. The term expires March twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Is there any recommendations? I have a recommendation for Ms. Becky Sheffield. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Second appointment is to the Board of Appeals to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Herschel Traywick. He resigned. Term will commence immediately and expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Any recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Ms. Tina Shiflett.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next appointment is to Department of Behavior, Health and Developmental Disabilities Board. Term is for Ms. Brenda Roberts, who already served two terms and ineligible to run again. Her, this term expires on April second, twenty nineteen. No, it's, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two, I'm sorry. I wrote all on my notes.
Her's expired on twenty nineteen.
All right, April of twenty twenty-two. Any recommendations? Any recommendations? Let's hold that and bring that back next meeting, Madam Clerk. Next appointment is to the Expansion to Development Authority Board. The term begins July second, twenty nineteen, expires July second, twenty twenty-three. Any recommendations? I'd like to recommend Ms. Helen McSwain.
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next appointment is to Veterans Advisory Board to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Leonard Morgan, who resigned. The term will commence immediately and expires June sixth, twenty twenty-two. Any recommendations? I'd like to recommend Ms. Khadija Black. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. We need a executive session for.
Those two, those two items that we added, are they automatically added?
They were on the consent.
Okay, don't consent, that's my question.
Just on litigation, that's it.
Executive, entertain the motion, go on to executive session for litigation, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Motion to re-convince.
So moved.
I'll second the motion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Have a good night.